Would you please read us out of closed?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move the Throna County School Board come out of closed session for the following: to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board pursuant to the real property exemption at 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia. And I also move to certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the school board.
One second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. London?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harper?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Item 3.01, Major Construction Project Updates, Mr. Todd Cagles, Mr. Wes Mitchell, and Mr. Kamal Khalil.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Nicely, Dr. Soltis, we have with us this evening, Wes Mitchell and Kamal Khalil from Skansco. Just a reminder that Wes is the project manager, our third-party construction manager for the CTE Center. And Mr. Khalil is the third-party manager for WE Kundev and Glen Cove Elementary Schools. And we have updates on our progress.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll start off with the CTE project. A lot going on there, if you can't tell from driving by. Peters Creek, we'll start with site work. The big thing for the past six months has been rock. That's pretty much all gone now. So that's a huge milestone. The rock crusher's gone. There's probably a little bit of rock left down near the roadway, near Bojangles, that they'll have to get out at final grade. But for the most part, it is all gone. The front parking lot is to subgrade, and all the storm structures are set. So when the time comes, we'll be able to go ahead and throw asphalt on that pretty quick. The remaining rock, there's like I said, just a little bit on that west parking lot. They started working to get all that to subgrade this week. So from that front parking lot working up and getting the storm structures in there as well. Fill operations also mostly complete. They started finishing the topsoil on that big slope, as well as spraying hydroseed this week. So as you drive by, you'll see less dirt and more grass hopefully in the coming months. Also as well, the turning lane has been prepped for VDOT. There's going to be a turning lane installed on Peters Creek Road, so you can turn left into the site. And then also this week, we moved some utility poles across Peters Creek. So all of our utility companies have been in there this week, working on that transfer, getting all the lines transferred over to the new poles. Area deconstruction, so that's where we're furthest along when you come up and visit. The roofing in Area D is complete, so we're under a dry roof for the most part. There's some flashing details and things that they'll have to clean up. And it's not completely dried in, because we don't have windows and doors yet. But it goes a long way to have a dry roof on for all the work going on inside. Brick veneer continues. Some stacked stone being installed as well. They transitioned to the stacked stone this week, so there's some more progress on that. If you come by, you can actually see the black with the stacked next to the lighter brick. So you kind of see how it's going to be a finished look. Inside, in-wall overhead and roughing for all of our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades, that's ongoing. So all of our mechanical piping and duct work is getting hung in the ceilings now. This week, the big push has been for duct work. So you go in there, there's a lot of our spiral duct work is up, and it's getting crowded in the ceilings. Sprinkler stall install started as well in the past two weeks. So all of our fire protection's getting installed. And then metal and CMU framing, so metal and concrete block framing is going in. It's 95% complete on that. So that allows them to put topout board, that's your drywall that goes to the top of the walls. They have to get that in before they get your big mechanical piping and duct work in, or else they won't have room to install it. So that's going on as well. Area A construction, CMU bearing walls are complete, and it's a full-time steel operation in Area A right now. We do have all the decking installed on the east side, and then the west side, we're about 95% complete on that. And we just have a little bit left in the common area for decking. And then after that, it'll be about ready for the roof there as well in the coming weeks. Area B and C is a big CMU operation, so all the bearing walls going up for that in Area B. We moved into Area C this week as well, so into our welding classroom. Got started on that. And then, of course, all our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades are following it, right behind them with their in-wall roughing. So that's probably about 75% complete. They've got one more wall to go down the corridor, but it's a big one, so it'll take a little bit of time. And then that should timeout, so as soon as the roof's done in A, we'll pop over to B for our steel erection. Some photos is Area D high roof. As you can see, that's all of our white TPO roofing is up, or it's actually gray. It looks white in the picture. And then the Area D brick, that whole wall is complete. Area A steel erection, you can actually see the clear story, so that's the common area pop-up. So there'll be glass in that area that pops up to give you a lot of light, natural light coming into the big common area. Area A steel decking as well. So this side's complete, and then on the other side of the entrance, that's getting very close to be complete as well. This is Area B CMU bearing walls. You can see the rebar sticking up on the other side. So the wall that we're looking at is almost done. It's getting very close. And then on the other side where the rebar is, that's your other corridor wall that has to go up. So that'll be next. And then just some more in Area B. This is your auto service shop. You can see how much space we're going to have. And that wall's complete now. And then just some site pictures. This is from the front parking lot. You can see it's starting to look like a building. It's going to be your view from the parking lot, looking up at the entrance. And then this is looking north in the parking lot, towards Highlands. Any questions on CTE?
Quick comment, just to put it on the Board's radar. When we were out there yesterday, we mentioned that maybe sometime in September, we would look at working with branch to do what they call a topping out ceremony?
Yes, sir. Yep. I think as soon as we get started or wrap up with A, we'll have a better idea of exactly when that will be. We're going to try to put it out, obviously, several weeks in advance, to give everybody time to prepare for it. And it'll be more of a ceremonial thing. It's not going to be the very last beam. If we do that, we're talking about really narrowing down our window to invite people. So, but just keep that on your radar, be on the lookout for it. We'll send something out in the next, in the coming weeks.
My turn. Sorry. I'll start with, good afternoon, though. I'll start with Kundev. Phase 1B and 2A are almost the same, like redundant. All the demo is done, installation of like framing, plumbing, overhead duct, ceiling of duct, drywall, patching, all of that is done. We got the cabinets last week. I'll show you in the pictures in a little bit. Signage will be done back towards the end, but I put that in there just as a reminder. Hopefully, 1B should be done maybe next week or the week after. That's almost like a fact. On the admin and corridor, the same thing, like plumbing, overhead, duct system, the sprinklers. All the overhead is done, drywall. Now we start painting also, like almost done, probably 80% done. Light fixtures are done. Continued, like on the cafeteria and kitchen, we have the, all the concrete block is done, the bricks are done, all the framing is done, 90% is done. But in the next week or so, we should be done with all of that. Ceiling grids, in-wall, all the in-wall, like plumbing and electrical also, it's done, plus the overhead. Sprinklers is done. Windows, 99.9 is done. Door framing is done. When you go outside to the building, like for the parking lot, we should be doing asphalt probably next week. All the curbing gutter now being done, probably by tomorrow, we should be done. All the islands, they're being, you know, dirt is put inside of them, compacting them. And probably we'll be, put some, the lights for the parking lot next week.
That'll be a big relief, when the parking lot's paved.
On Kundev, probably some of you, when you drive by, you'll see, there's a lot of work outside the parking lot. Now they're doing the curbing gutter. And hopefully also we'll do the asphalt maybe next week or the week after, but probably next week. The admin area, we put the dose up on top of the roof, those, the heating and cooling stuff, the equipment. They're connected, but they're not running yet. The framing of the walls, the ceilings, all that's done in the admin area. There's a few things that we need to do, maybe a cleaning, painting. Some windows are missing some glass, but we should be done with that probably this week or next week. Phase 2, second floor, the demo's done. Sewer, we're working mainly on the sewer now. Overhead plumbing, electrical, that's also done. Paneling, piping, wiring, the same with 3A cafeteria. A lot of underground is being done. Overhead plumbing, electrical. It sounds like it's redundant, but it's, it has to be done. Phase 3B, the kitchen, also the same thing, where the demo is done. Sewer trenches and pipe installation is done. On the site, this, when you take a drive, probably you'll see how far they went from like grading, curbing gutter. And that's the main thing. When you set your curbing gutter, you can do your asphalt. Hopefully by next week, we'll do all that. You'll see a different parking lot. I think that's pretty much it. But I want to show you a few pictures. On the brick, that's on Glen Cove, you'll see the kitchen and the cafeteria. Kundev, yes. The wall with the, I mean, the brick with the stain, that's the gem that's existing. But the ones to the left, that's the new stuff. And that's the curbing gutter I was talking about on Kundev. That's also on Kundev. That's the cabinets. If you look on the ceiling, we don't have the panels yet, but they're working on them. The patching of the drywall. The electrical work also, and that will be covered with ceiling tiles. The IT room, the data room center. This is for Glen Cove. If you could, I mean, it's a small retaining wall, but you could see it. On the next one, they're just forming the curbing gutter. That was last week or the week before. And that's the sewer work on the right. It should be done with that this week, hopefully. More electrical work. Now they're starting with the tile. I wish I had a photo that showed the finish. Maybe I did at the end. And the copper piping also, we're being like insulation, insulation of these pipes. Wish I had more photos, but thank you. Any questions, anything? Jim, I saw you at the tour.
Yeah, so we
What's your feedback?
Monday. Oh, it's great. Looks really good. It's coming along. Every area is almost touched now. Got to walk it with a couple of Board Supervisor members, and so they got to see it. It's really looking, really looking good.
It's changing every day.
It is. I do have one quick question. I've got the branch group, where you're going to open the new administration wing. I'm assuming maybe we're a little behind at Kundev?
That's October, November.
Yeah. I was just curious.
Before school starts at Glen Cove.
Correct. That's awesome.
Yes, there'll be one. There'll be a ceremony.
Yeah, no, I figured that. But I just assume that means we're a little bit behind the timeframe for
Yeah, it's, they're not behind schedule. It's just like those two things were phased differently because of the big expansion.
And the new cafeteria and kitchen over there.
Right. Okay. Yep, that's awesome. I didn't know we were that close, but as I drove by Cove, I noticed the curb and everything, the grading. It looks like it's coming along great.
Yep.
That's awesome.
So you're saying the first layer of asphalt will be down next week?
Yeah.
Awesome.
As soon as, as soon as, as soon as they put the curbing gutter, that's, you know, that's your reference point, and then they can do that quick.
They did say this wouldn't be the permanent asphalt, though, that they'd come back with the last layer.
Correct. The cap would be towards the end, because the mess, if you do mess or you do something we can fix.
Right.
You don't want the cap to be
Right. No, it looks great. It really did.
Remind us again of the completion date of those two schools?
Substitution completion, I think it's 9, I think it's 9/17 on Kundev, and 8/11 on Glen Cove.
26.
26, of course.
That'd be a miracle.
If they could push that forward a month on Kundev, just to get it right there before the school starts.
Yeah, that is the
Yeah, right. No, I get it. I, yeah.
It has been truly amazing, the speed that you guys have been able to work at. I mean, driving by Peters Creek and looking at how fast those walls are going up, and then stopping by Glen Cove and seeing all that work. It just amazes me that you guys have the ability to do that. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you. Absolutely. They got, on Kundev, they got 110 guys. It's like you're talking about a town working. So, over here, we got maybe 75, 80. So it's a lot of people working.
That's awesome. We're about 85 to 95, something like that.
It's really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I really appreciate the updates. It makes a difference in terms of us knowing what's going on. So, yeah.
It's amazing they come and give us all these updates.
Did I didn't say it?
There's no black holes.
Item 3.02, Proposed Feasibility Study to Explore Future Uses of Current Burton Center Property and Other Properties for Possible Specialized Special Education and Alternative Education Programs. Dr. Ken Nicely and Mr. Todd Cagles.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to kick this off, and then turn it over to Mr. Cagles for some details. As the Board knows, we've got some challenges when it comes to some of the, you know, year-by-year programs that we work with. So one of those is working with our CSA funding, which covers lots of things, which I'm going to go over briefly. But what we best use it for, or mostly use it for, is all of our students who, our students with disabilities who need to be in a different placement than their general ed placement. And so they'll wind up, you know, attending our private day school in the area. So I want to talk a little bit about what challenges that presents, and just, you know, what's, you know, what are some things that are happening with that that really kind of, you know, need to be sooner than later addressed in a different way to try to mitigate some of those continuing pressures. Going to present an opportunity that we might have, kind of follow up to all this major construction that we have. It kind of presents some existing properties that we might look at to try to mitigate some of these challenges, and then present a proposal to actually conduct a feasibility study. So that's sort of the, sort of the roadmap, talking about what those CSA funding pressures are, what starting the new program looks like, and what challenges that presents, opportunities, and then, and then the study. So just from some background information, CSA, of course, is the Children's Services Act, which is a Virginia law that really pulls together eight different funding streams to support high-risk youth, you know, students in K-12, and of course, their families. We think of like the private day school funding, but it encompasses a whole lot more than that, including foster care, foster care prevention, of course, the private day schools for students served by special education, independent living services for students who maybe don't have family support, and there's support for trying to help them transition, and then wraparound services for students with disabilities. This is a multi-agent, agency process that is managed by several agencies, kind of housed under Department of Social Services. But of course, schools have an integral part in this. Other agencies include, Blue Ridge Behavioral Health Care plays a role, Court Services plays a role, because sometimes you're dealing with students who might have some legal issues, law enforcement, and then the private day, or private providers in general themselves. To kind of paint the picture of what some of the challenges are in terms of why we probably need to think ahead and be proactive into developing some future solutions, just looking at what those CSA expenditures are. This is for fiscal year 2024. This is information that we have jointly been looking at together with county staff. But these different buckets of costs that are, that fall under CSA, are some of the ones listed there. So private day schools, that runs about 51% of the funding that is run through CSA, which in fiscal year 2024 was about 6.4 million. Community-based services, residential placements, that's actually a step above your private day school. That's where students occasionally need some very intensive, you know, residential-type settings, which is usually out of the area in terms of their education and their family living and so forth. Obviously, you know, very high, intense need, you know, situations there. Foster care, I mentioned, is about 15% of what takes up that funding. What they call non-mandated services, special ed, wraparound services, that could be things like where, you know, a family or students need outside counseling services, or other kinds of therapeutic-type interventions that that team, you know, approves for them to have. Some of these services are mandated, so private day services are mandated, because that's all IEP team-driven. So basically, when that goes through the process, I mean, they have to approve those things. There are other things that the FAP team or the CMP team can approve, and that becomes non-mandated, because it's not IEP-driven necessarily. Again, this is some high-level background. We do share, as a school system, in the cost of that CSA fund. So each year when we do the county budget, they give us a set amount, but that money is transferred directly back to the county side through a budget transfer. And those costs, of course, have risen each year. So for us, in this past year, that we budgeted about $2.2 million, and that's gone up in this coming year's budget by another million dollars. So 3.2 is what we budgeted to transfer back to that services. If you compare that to what the actual expenditures were back in FY '24, you'll see that, you know, that does not cover the entire cost, which of course, leads to some intense budgetary pressure points on the county side, as well as, you know, the part that we kind of play into that. I did put a note in that, because we, as we were discussing this with the county administration, and they did bring to our attention that currently, that CSA budget is overspent overall, okay, on the county side as well. I think it's about the $2 million or something like that. We've not been told exactly if we're going to need to share in the cost of shoring up that budget, but, you know, was sort of told that as a reminder, that when we do our year-end funds, you know, they, that's on an annual basis in terms of their passing of ordinance, saying, you know, how we can use our year-end funds. Normally, that's split between major and minor capital. But they could very well come back and say, hey, we need for you to put, you know, a portion of that toward shoring up these CSA costs. So just bringing that to the school board's attention, because that is something that's out there for discussion.
18 or 20 million that we've lost the last five years.
Understood, right. I just want to make you all aware of that. That is something that could come down. So obviously, you know, CSA costs are expected to continue to arise, to rise. And a lot of that is driven by the private day school costs, because, I mean, they're operating, they're operating a business themselves. And of course, it's hard to find staff to, you know, these are, these are, these are students that we cannot, you know, adequately appropriately serve in our general ed setting. So these are pretty, you know, extreme needs, extreme behaviors. And so you can imagine, you know, what it takes to try to staff and fund that. So, you know, sympathetic to that, but I mean, the costs are continuing, continuing to arise. And so there's some other pressure points for us. Here's some examples of what private day school costs, I think in this past year is where these came from. These are some of the providers. So you can see on a day-to-day basis, there's different tiers of costs. And so just on a general basis, you can see that's one level of funding, but then for more intensive needs, let's say a student, you know, has to have that, you know, one-on-one person, that one-to-one staff ratio, even in the private day school setting, well, that private day school is going to cost, you know, charge a much higher, you know, rate for that. So you can kind of see what some of those rates are. And of course, it all adds up. It's really, it's really a cost pressure point, but also a space pressure point, especially on the elementary side of things, or our elementary students who, you know, really just kind of be appropriately placed. Their, their least restrictive environment really is not the general ed setting. It's determined by an IEP team. But especially for on the elementary side, there just aren't spaces in these private day providers to, you know, for them to be placed. And so they might wind up on a, you know, home-based education system for, you know, situation for a while, or things like that. So it's a cost issue in terms of these pressures, but also a space issue, which we, you know, we're trying to think ahead, and how can we, how can we address these. One of the things, as you kind of look at what other school systems do, there are, you know, some other school systems that we've identified that are similar size to us, similar demographics, who have lower CSA costs. And so the question arose, well, why is that? Is that something that we're doing differently in our decision-making or so forth? And that's really not the case. The big factor is that some of these other divisions do already have their own larger in-house in-house internal, you know, alternative education program, run as a, you know, full-time public day school, not a private day school, right? Some, you know, participate in regional programs and things of that sort. But you're really doing like an apples-to, you know, asparagus kind of comparison when you look at CSA costs by themselves because there are other factors involved. So that, which leads to this idea that, you know, one way to mitigate some of these rising costs as well as alleviate some of these space needs is for us to look at starting, you know, our own alternative education program. And I'll use that term, but, you know, think public day school, think, you know, full-time. And really, not the same thing as our current A-Step program. You're aware, our A-Step program, which is housed here in our building, it has been very, very successful. But that is a, it only serves secondary students and it's only on a, you know, halftime basis, okay? So we get those kids through, so that's, you know, students are placed there for disciplinary reasons. But we also, of course, have our Gateway Program, which is really more of a dropout prevention program, which again, both of those have been very, very successful, but just aren't adequate in size or scope to meet our current needs as well as expanding future needs. So the idea that, you know, can we look at starting our own internal program to meet some of these needs? Stating the obvious here, obviously, that requires additional capital funds to actually have a place to do it, as well as, you know, additional operating funds, okay? Because this doesn't happen by itself, obviously, so you need, you know, more folks to do that. We have engaged in ongoing conversations with county staff to talk about what that might look like because obviously, this is a joint challenge because of the CSA funding, that joint responsibility. They've been very open to having discussions about and recognizing that, hey, if we're gonna stand up our own program, you know, we're probably gonna need some additional financial assistance to do that. And I've also reached out to one of our neighboring school divisions who, because of proximity and so forth, might have an interest in partnering with us and they've got a positive response about that so far, especially again, on the elementary side of things. So there's some factors kind of at play. So what we want to bring to you today is the fact that we do have some potential infrastructure opportunities because, as I said, to stand up a new school, it's capital cost as well as operational. We haven't gotten to the operational side of things yet in terms of what that would have to look like. But in terms of capital, we do, because of, you know, relocating our CTE center, we have the Burton property that will come available, you know, sometime in 2027. Don't know if that's the answer or not, but we opt to probably start the process of doing due diligence to determine the viability of using, you know, those spaces, you know, for this, for the particular purpose. And so we do have, you know, the existing property there. Again, don't know if that's the answer or not because I'm thinking, okay, what? Do you continue to invest in a building whose infrastructure is such that you could renovate and it's worth, it's fine, it makes financial sense to continue to invest in that property and those buildings? I suspect the answer might be yes, but don't know, right? Does it make more sense to, you know, sell some of our existing properties and, you know, build new somewhere? Again, that's at a big cost, but does that make more financial sense, you know, long-term? Again, don't know the answer to that. But so, you know, one idea is, of course, we have some acreage here on our property here on Cove Road. We do have the two properties up in downtown Salem on South Market Street, which I'll show you. Does it make sense to look at selling those properties and moving those operations, you know, to the Burton Center property? And of course, you think about cost of renovation, you never know what you're gonna uncover when you're doing renovation versus new construction. Those are all variables, you know, kind of pieces to the puzzle. So just as a reminder, we do, of course, you know, have the Burton Center property over on Roanoke Boulevard. And that's about twenty-nine point nine acres. Of course, we're very familiar with the three buildings that are there, which will mark, we refer to them as Building A, B, and C. And then beyond that, of course, are some parks and rec-maintained playing fields that they've invested, you know, quite a bit of money in as well. So of course, those structures are, you know, are aging, which is one reason, of course, for, you know, building a new CTE center. But they still might have some very useful life to them that could, you know, fit our purposes. Unless they, what the current programs are in those buildings, just as a reminder of what those spaces kind of look like and how they might be, some of those spaces might be more easily adapted to a classroom space you might need for an alternative education program or not, right? So that's why I kind of listed those. So Building A, that front building, of course, has the admin function, it's got classes like the cosmetology, the Center for Visual Arts, which is a more of a traditional classroom space. Of course, the nursing program, so it's generally, you know, laid out like regular classrooms. Same thing with the early childhood programs, the game design, cybersecurity. So those, that building generally has, you know, classes or, you know, spaces that are already kind of laid out as classroom as well as that admin function. So the thought would be, you know, from a non-expert side in terms of, you know, structures and that kind of stuff, but the thought would be that that would probably most likely lend itself to maybe, you know, use for that alternative ed space. So there's that, but also the question of, is it enough space, right, for what we need to accommodate? That Building B, which is the upper building, that of course houses that cafeteria, the culinary arts programs, there is kitchen space in there, the English language program, the high-intensity programs there, mass communications program. The Center for Performing Arts is there, which has some larger spaces, but are still typical sort of classroom areas. And then ISAP, which is our GED program. And then, of course, it does have those auto-service welding and EMT functions on the, on the lower end down here. And then Building C, which is the one, of course, closer to Mason's Creek over there, I'm bringing that up on purpose just because reminding, you know, ourselves that part of that property isn't a floodplain and so I was always have to be mindful of what value that brings and functionality. So hopefully, this feasibility study will speak to that. But Building C does, so currently houses our computer information technology programs, criminal justice, which are generally classroom spaces, mechatronics are kind of like that, engineering spaces. But then you also have your building trades programs, which are, you know, laid out a little differently and so forth. So just a quick reminder of what those buildings are, which we can look at and how they're currently being used. And then most of you are familiar with the property up in Salem, on, off of Fourth Street up there, which is on South Market. So if you'll notice, that's where Glen, or I'm sorry, Jibia Carver Elementary School is on the other side of that property. That, of course, is a City of Salem school, but right next to that is our Transportation Department and Facilities. That's, of course, you know, their offices, as well as the mechanical, the garages, as well as the bus lot. There's also, you know, fuel depot up there, so you have fuel tanks, those kind of things always, you know, play into those kinds of, kinds of issues. Because of its proximity to Carver Elementary, we do know that there's interest, you know, on Salem's side, say, hey, we probably would like to have that property. So that's a, you know, a factor that kind of plays into that. That property is about three acres, a little more. And then the property across the street, there's actually two different properties and those house our maintenance departments. So the larger one is on the, what I'll call the lower end down here, which is about a little over an acre. And there's also a smaller lot, which maintenance also uses on up South Market Street there and that's about point three five acres. So again, these are pieces that we need some help on determining, okay, does it make any sense to relocate those functions or value in selling those properties to help us reconfigure other existing, you know, properties and in the infrastructure? Don't know the answer to any of that, but that's why we'd like to look and have somebody, you know, help us with that. So that's why we're proposing doing an independent feasibility study, which would help us to determine the capacity, the feasibility, the cost effectiveness of using existing infrastructure to solve some of these needs that we articulated here, especially in establishing this alternative education program. The focus of the program would be to operate as a, like I say, a public day school to meet the needs of students with disabilities that cannot be served in general education placement. So think about the students who are currently in private day school placements and don't mean to put you on the spot, Dr. Harmon, but that's about how many students? You knew I was gonna ask that, right?
Yes, I did. I had a break here. About, it's right around a hundred and thirteen with several wait lists.
Yeah, so those are students who are already placed there. Again, we have a waiting list of others who, especially on the elementary side, who need to get in.
So right now, we have ten with signed IEPs waiting.
Yeah. So that's, you know, part of the need there. So and also think.
Go ahead.
Space for those other ten?
The private days don't.
Oh, that's private days.
They're waiting for private day.
That's.
So we're serving a hundred and seventy-four in our specialized programs.
So in A-Step, we go.
No, no, no.
No, that's private day.
Totally different things.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Private day schools are your Minnix, your Rivermots, your.
Right, the day school, but not, that's outside the scope of the number of what we have in A-Step.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what is the number of A-Step?
By fifty-some is what are currently served?
Yeah, and it wrote.
Fifty-some there and a hundred and seventy-some, you say?
In our specialized programs.
Yeah. And again, you gotta think about, and what we're looking at here is try to serve all of those.
That's what I'm saying.
But it is two different buckets.
You need, right, no, yeah, absolutely. But the opportunity is there, you still, you're looking for one place to try and.
That's right. Yeah, the idea would be to have the capacity to move our current A-Step program and expand it as well, which again, is more for disciplinary issues as well as the dropout prevention, right? So trying to, yeah, meet those needs. And also, a couple of you have mentioned, you know, possibly looking at some sort of substance abuse program, right? Which also could possibly be, you know, rolled into that as well. But the primary function and goal is to serve kids, you know, it's K-12, but really try to better meet the lack of space for elementary. And so that's, it's not, it's not that that's the only thing, it's want to emphasize that that's really a huge problem we're trying to mitigate here with that.
And for a number of purposes, how many students do we have at one time at BCAT? I'm just trying to.
Currently?
Yeah. I know that they're tagged at other schools, but I mean, do we have?
I'd say at a time, you're talking three or four hundred because it's A-B basis because I think the total enrollment's around seven hundred, so I'm ballparking that.
Three to four hundred.
Yeah, but that's part of the feasibility study because I'm not sure you can equate. Yeah, I'm not sure you can say, okay, this is what we currently have, that's what we can do because the spaces will be very different.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And one thing I want to point out to your point is if we, you know, A-Step program, that's a half-day program, right, which means we're not doing, and then it's also secondary. We're not doing, you know, we don't have to have playgrounds for recess, we don't have to have cafeteria to serve food. Full-day public day school, we're gonna have to have those functions included as well. So just to, you know, bring that out there. So those are all things we'll have to figure out. That's why, you know, is that space, you know, good? I think there's some opportunity there, that's what we want to, you know, determine.
Yeah, I'd just like to add in that with Burton, it wasn't that, in my opinion, I know it was an old aging building, nineteen sixty-three. However, we really grew out of that space. I mean, we grew out of that space. And so it's not that that building is defunct or gross. I mean, it's aesthetically, is it pleasing? No. But it still could serve our needs here, is my point.
I think there's some opportunity there.
Yeah.
Which I think we need to look at. So, yeah, and I put in there additional goal beyond this, you know, public day thing. And just to be clear, I mean, it's not gonna make the need for some private day school placements go away. But right now, there's just not enough space in those places, plus the cost is such that we think we can do it more efficiently and really try to stem the tide, is what I'm trying to say. Because this is not getting any better, right? The costs are gonna continue to climb, the needs are gonna continue to climb. So again, just some opportunities here to be proactive and try to look to see if we can, how we can solve that problem. So, yeah, I mentioned the A-Step piece. So here's, and I'll let Mr. Cagle jump in, but I try to say this, you know, basically, we know there's lots of pieces here at play. We have different properties maybe available to us. We have different ways to think about how this makes sense. I think what we're sitting here saying, you know, we don't have the expertise and knowledge to know what the best way it is to take any one of those standalone options or what combination of those makes the most sense. So that's really what we want to, you know, try to achieve by doing this independent study, to really get some hard data to kind of bring to bear. They're not gonna make the decision for us, obviously, but at least they'll better inform us in terms of how to make, you know, good decisions around that, so.
Worth paying fifty thousand dollars to give us what I think our staff and knowledge can give us. I'm just wondering if that's, you know, money well spent or would I rather have the knowledge of our staff to help us determine that?
Yeah. Let Mr. Cagle speak to that, but I think what we're here saying is we don't have the expertise to really do that adequately and especially looking at the infrastructure of the current buildings to, you know, really tell us, you know, what we're ready to do here.
Yeah, so what we'd like to do is partner with architecture, architects and engineers to assess the feasibility of doing several different options. And it's not really maybe the right words to say option, these are really sort of components that can be combined with one another. We'd like to address not only the need for the private day piece and expanding those programs, but also our aging maintenance and transportation facilities. So we've already had all of those properties appraised, so we have an understanding of what their current value is. What we don't know is what is it gonna cost to renovate BCAT if we chose to go that route or to build new buildings if we decided to do that? And that's where the feasibility study could help us. You know, they'll do programming studies, they'll do cost estimations, they'll do some conceptual designs, they'll tell us, no, this won't work at BCAT, or yes, it will work at BCAT, or you need to, you know, consider building something right out here is a thing that we've considered since we own this, this property already. And so I'll just go real quickly through the different components. One would be to convert Building A at BCAT into an alternative school. And the reason we're looking at this one is that Building A, as Dr. Nice has really already said, contains classrooms, administrative spaces and support spaces. So this would seem to be the logical place for an alternative school, but again, we need to look at all of the requirements for the programs that we're talking about putting in there. We need confirmation on things like square footage requirement and support spaces like the kitchens, the gymnasiums and things of that nature. Those are, you know, when you go to build a gym, for instance, that's very expensive. So we have to look at those sorts of things.
Can I jump in real quick, Mr. Cagle, just say, severe support, Mr. Greenway? What we have done as a staff is sat down and looked at, okay, what kinds of spaces would you need? Like, you know, Dr. Harmon can speak to say, okay, in a private day school setting, you need, you know, these kinds of spaces in order to adequately meet the needs of those kids. We sort of started that process of mapping out, well, we need, you know, a place for this or a place for this function or whatever, or we can mention the food service and all that. But just in terms of what it takes to manage students with, you know, severe behaviors, we have done that piece, which is what we'll give to them to then let them tell us, okay, can you do it here?
And there's legal requirements to consider also, so it's not just us, you know, having a feeling for how much space we need. There's actually, when you go to do private day, for instance, there's a requirement for a certain amount of square footage per student for private day schools, that sort of thing. So those are things where you need an architect to make sure that you're meeting all those requirements. Another component would be to convert this building, central office, into the alternative school and construct a new office building here on the existing site. This might make sense if you consider the value of BCAT and then take into account that we already have a gymnasium, there's already a kitchen space and that, and that sort of thing. So again, we need a complete study to see if that's feasible and what the cost would be to do that. A third component is to construct a new building for an alternative school. That would be a, you know, sort of simple, basic building, but it would be new and, you know, of course, it'll be nice because it's new. It may be possible to build a basic, small building as an alternative school. Where it gets cost prohibitive, as I already mentioned, is the gymnasium and the cafeteria that may be required there. Fourth component is relocating maintenance and transportation to the existing BCAT building. That's problematic in that there's no garage space over there that can accommodate school buses, so you're looking at an addition to be able to, you know, accommodate the lifts and the roof height that you need to be able to do that. There is a lot of space over there in Building B and Building C. It would still need to be renovated, so obviously, there's significant cost to the renovation. And again, that's, you know, where a feasibility study could help us. So the scope of the feasibility study would be to do, just a short summary of it, would be to do multi-day programming workshops to determine exactly what our needs are. They would then provide conceptual designs for proof of concept. And then they would do cost estimating for all the components that we've already discussed. And we feel like that would then give us the information along with the appraisals we've already had done to make an informed decision as to what might be the best path forward.
Could I offer up an option five?
Sure.
What about the possibility of looking to going in with Roanoke County? They've put the new facility over there for transportation on, is it Hollins Road or somewhere over that way? And I don't know if farming out's the right word, but allowing them to work on our vehicles and maintenance. We still have control of, you know, the transportation department and so forth. But I think that's one way we could save our citizens a lot of money if we could put the provisions of both together to, to house our transportation maintenance for buses and vehicles and such over at that facility. And my understanding is through talking to another board member. And my understanding is through talking to another board member on the supervisors, is that they could probably handle that because they have enough, and that's what I was told, you know, whether that's true or not, I don't. I'm not saying with the staff they have, but I'm saying with the facilities they have, so.
We did have some very preliminary discussions, I believe that was actually suggested by Mr. Linden last year, maybe a year or so ago, and we had some preliminary discussions with the county in regards to that. At that time, their staff indicated that they did not have the capacity to take on our vehicles and still maintain, I think, the water authority, the trash vehicles.
But they've got the site, maybe they have to add a couple bays or something, or.
Yeah, sure.
I'm just throwing out the idea.
Well, sure, if they're willing to expand the facility and staffing, that, that could be a, a possibility. I, I, I'm not certain if that's something we'd want to try to add to this feasibility study, because obviously, the county has to be willing to do that, or if those are conversations that are best had with Roanoke County first and then perhaps studied separately.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, it seems very logical and, and because we brought this up before, because I've had the same, you know, thoughts and wonder, I, each time we have brought it up, the, the response has been, well, they really don't have the space for it, but then we can bring it up again and continue to explore that.
Probably worth another ask, but I did, when I spoke with board supervisors and went toward that building, they did indicate that they were near capacity. When you think about the garbage trucks and the police vehicles and the ambulances and everything else that they service, they, they did not indicate that they would have room for, for our fleets as well.
But to Mr. Greenway's point, I mean, is there, is there enough land there where an expansion might make good cost sense? Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but.
Let me just say, for our citizens, that there are a lot of things we could do to work together with the county that were duplicating a lot of services. And for me, that's, again, I'm not saying it'll work, I'm just saying it's worth asking the question, like Mr. Linden said. Because, you know, and I'm not saying give up our transportation or anything like that, I'm just saying that if there's ways to save our citizens money, in my mind, I don't know why we have two separate facilities, and, and honestly, I haven't been over there in a while, but when I came on the board, that place in Salem should have been renovated twenty-five years ago. It's how those guys keep us operating is phenomenal and amazing, and we, they deserve everything they get and pats on the back and thank yous, and then they drive the buses and. So, you know, if we can save our citizens money, I know that doesn't happen very much these days, we keep growing revenue, but I think that's one of the things we can do to try and look at ways we can work together to save money. And so that's just, again, I, it, like you say, it may not work, I'm not saying it'll work, because I don't know, but it's certainly worth asking the question and talking it over and seeing if we could build another bay or two and sell that property and put it maybe towards B C A, whatever we do.
You're right, that's, it's an adequate facility for sure.
And then to the point, and, and again, I'm not trying to belabor this, I'll do whatever everybody wants to do, but I think our staff knows what we need in relationship to, we've got some very smart, capable people, and I, I just think where we might need to help is engineering for facilities to, but I think they can develop what we need and where we, where we, the capacity and, and features and stuff, so just, just my thoughts on it. But we absolutely need to, I'm so in favor of the A step program, and I hope we're not turning away any of our schools that need to send kids over for A step.
Could never turn anybody away for capacity reasons or anything.
That's good, that's good, because if that becomes a problem, then that's, I think that's our problem, we need to find a way to fund it.
We have talked about building out A step. And of course, as Mr. Kegels mentioned, or maybe you mentioned it, the substance abuse program as well, which is typically when you start, you get, there's money from the state and you start very small, eight to ten students, you know, so I don't know how that couldn't fit in there as well.
And I have looked into that, and I actually have a phone call with the lady who's over from V D O E tomorrow.
Oh, good.
But it's, they have applied for part of the opioid grant that actually pays for that, and they have not gotten it yet.
Okay.
So in the fall, they won't know till the fall whether there's even gonna be grant money.
It might be ending.
So we're trying.
Well, that's right, well, with the change of administration, it might be ending too.
Did learn that the average lifespan of a recovery school is nine and a half years, so they're not sustaining very more, very long, and there's forty-four of them in the country. I did a lot of research on that, and I'd be happy to share with you.
With the number of factors involved, I think the forty-nine thousand five hundred is, is money well spent personally, to, to make sure that we get it right or that we know what we're doing, rather than take a chance on, I'm not trying to belittle staff and, and your knowledge, but I, I think, Mr. Kegels, you would probably agree that that's the money well spent to make sure that we are, know what we're getting into.
Well, I think you're, you've said that you've, you're gonna give them the information that they would need in terms of what our needs are.
Yeah, this, this is truly the engineering and architectural side of it.
What's the best way to go about making that happen? I mean, I, I agree, I think this is the best money that we'll spend is to make this happen, I mean, we've talked about this for a long time, a really long time, it's a huge need, especially serving our elementary school students, and we're, we're not able to do that in the best way at this point. So being able to offer this is, I think it's gotta be like one of our highest priorities at this point.
And to keep it in-house.
That's what I was gonna say, is keep it in-house.
And the cost, it's a huge cost.
A little bit easier for a parent to stomach that too, knowing that they're still being educated by our school system, we're not putting them out in a private day where it makes a parent a little more nervous.
Well, and in some cases, we can't even put them there.
Right.
Because there's not space, and it sounds like your conversations with the county is that they are interested to hear about this.
Yeah, I think what comes actually, like we said, is, is it's gonna require, you know, some, some capital costs, you know, construction renovation, it's gonna require some operating costs. Haven't, haven't gotten to know yet in terms of.
But this is costing us a lot of money now too, I mean, so we've gotta find another way to do this, and we're still not serving all of our students.
Right.
Right.
There's a lot to this, I think you're right, I think it would be best well suited to have a professional come in and tell us.
This is a no-brainer to me for the fifty thousand dollars, the wealth of information we'll get, especially with the codes and the, you might, wheelchair accessibility, ramps, there's a lot of components that we need to think about.
That, that is one area we know is not, you know, currently ADA.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, and I think you're adding in the transportation piece too, I mean, this is a lot to undertake to try to figure out how to best serve quite a few different needs, so we've gotta figure out how to do that the right way.
I'm on board.
It's gonna be a lot on you guys to figure out the operating expenses too.
One thing at a time.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Because elementary will definitely want to be face to face, not.
Right.
Right.
I'm excited, I'm really excited about it.
Yeah, me too.
Go on as an action item or consent?
Yeah, so we can proceed, if there's unanimous consent, we can go ahead and put it on consent for next week, unless you want to, you know, bring it back before action.
I'd like to see it on there, I'm a yes.
Click on consent, thank you.
Is there anything else?
No.
Good. All right. All right, item three point zero three, discussion of minor capital requests, Mr. Todd Kegels.
I believe each one of you has a packet, it's the list of minor capital proposed projects that we have not yet funded. They are color coded according, well, first, these projects have all been reviewed with the board, actually multiple times, and have undergone extensive discussion. The ones that are highlighted in green are the ones that I believe currently we have majority support for. The ones that are not highlighted in green, I do not believe we have support for yet at this time. I'm presenting this list to the board for discussion and questions and answers.
So this, this in green is the approved list?
It's not approved, it's the ones that I believe you have already majority support for on the, on the board, so that's what's approved or not.
How do you know that?
Just based on conversations with individual board members.
Okay.
Certainly, that's not set in stone, that's up the board.
So I'd like to just share what we've, it looks like a breakdown we have here, somebody correct me if we're wrong, if I'm wrong. It looks like by district, we've asked in Cave for three hundred and ninety-four thousand, Windsor Hills about nine hundred and six thousand, Hollins eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, Glenver a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and Venton, or Todd, I should have said, and Venton two hundred and ninety-seven five thousand, and it looks like somewhere roughly, we're gonna approve Cave for three hundred and fifty-four thousand, Windsor about five hundred and fifty-six thousand, Hollins about three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I'll give you the numbers.
And Glenver a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and Venton twenty-two thousand.
So it's, so for Windsor, it should be three seventy?
Three seventy.
And for, well, Bogle split between the two of us, so that's why that looks, so, so for Cave Spring, it's for my area, it should be three fifty-four.
What is the Bogle split?
It's the concession.
So we're updating the concession stands at Cave, or the snack bars at Cave Spring, Hidden Valley, Cave Spring Middle for sixty thousand. So that got approved, okay, all right.
So three seventy for Windsor. Four sixty-five for Northside, I don't know how that.
The Northside splits with David, David and I, so.
It's at four sixty-five, so four sixty-five for Northside. All right, that's four sixty-five, then what's the rest of Cave?
Three fifty-four.
Three, so that was right.
And then.
Glenver.
It's one twenty-five.
And then Venton will get twenty-two thousand, so that's nine, five is fourteen, one point four, okay, all right.
So I suppose if there are no questions on these, we need to determine the best way forward if we wanna put these as an action item on the meeting next week, or as a consent item, or if you, you know, if there's debate in terms of needing to move the, the projects around. All of those things are up to the board, obviously.
It's hard to swallow, no pun intended, but it, it is what it is. But I will tell you guys this, if I give you my word on doing something, you don't have to question it, I will do it. I will stick by it, that's all, I'm good.
So we would like to add it to the agenda for the next meeting, which is next week.
Would you mind listing that as consent or as action items?
Fine with consent, for me.
I'm fine with consent.
Obviously, I'm not fine, but I, you know, it's good.
Well, we just need to determine if we're doing it as consent or action at this point.
Right, just, would you like to take a vote in first, first ascension?
Yeah, that's fine.
Then we can put it on as action.
Yeah, put it on action, yeah.
I just ask the board, do you want as the action item, do you want a review of each project, or do you just want the list? No, I can, I can halve it.
I mean, I think we've, we've reviewed quite a bit, I think we're okay to just.
I can halve my sections.
All right, is there anything else?
That's it.
All right, item three point zero four, random drug testing program, information for consideration, Dr. Jamie Saltis.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Nicely, I was asked to, I don't know why I'm not projecting. Sorry.
Wait for you to start the show.
Sorry. Anyway, I was asked to look into potential for a future program for random drug testing. We have two divisions around us that are doing it with Salem and Bodatot. So I collected some information, like why would we want to consider random drug testing? Basically, the whole point is to promote a healthier, safer environment for our kids, right? Kids that are participating in extracurricular activities or sports, you could, you could say should be held to a higher standard because they are actually representing the school division. Also, if you're using any kind of illegal, illegal drug and you are participating in extracurricular activity, you could be hurt. You know, it, it doesn't help your athletic endeavors. Also, and this is what I heard all the time in my former division, is it gives the kids a, an opportunity to push back against the peer pressure if they're at these things, because they can say, I can't, I could be tested, you know, it, it gives them a, an help. Also, we could intervene with a kid much earlier if we called them earlier. Doing that, and the whole point of this program is really to support and be preventative, not the punitive part. And then the bottom line is it's illegal. So what would be our purpose to promote a health, health, safety and wellbeing, promote the health, safety and wellbeing of our students by discouraging substance use through preventative measures, so kind of being preventative instead of reactionary. Our commitment, and the bottom one's pretty important, is that no student should be expelled or suspended from school as the sole, sole result of any verified positive test conducted by the school under this program, because a kid has a property right to go to school, it's covered under the, the Fourth Amendment. However, they don't have a property right to participate in extracurricular activities. So we couldn't suspend them from, from school or expel them from school if we called them using this program. Obviously, if you called them using it or dealing at school, that's a different story. So is it legal, which would be my first question if I were you guys? It, it is basically based off of what I told you guys, that we cannot exclude them from school. However, extracurricular activities, as ruled by the Supreme Court, is a privilege, and therefore, you can put the intervention program or the prevention program in place in order to allow them to participate. So the, really, the main Supreme Court case that did this was Veronia School District versus Wayne Action, and basically, they said it was constitutional because, and these are really important, it didn't cause the athletes to be expelled from school, so they had no property right laws. They had an opportunity to receive assessment and rehabilitative services and not face punishment, school punishment pursuant to the positive test. And they also ruled that if an athlete refuses to take the test, that that can be counted as a positive, because it is an extracurricular and that, that time being away from the extracurricular is not a property right. So comparing Salem's and Bodatot's, and I'm very familiar with Salem since, since I oversaw it, Bodatot's, I talked to staff over there to kind of get more information, because they're, they apparently had it in the past, which I didn't know, and they're bringing it back. So both, both are doing middle school and high school students, Salem lets some sixth grade students play some sports now, just ones that they don't have rec to offer, so they get tested as well. Students in both areas, I guess Bodatot is different, because they're also gonna test kids that request a parking permit, and they're also, also gonna test kids that participate in C T S Os, which are the career technical student organizations, where that's your skills USA's, that's like when we go win the engine building contest, any of those things. Bodatot's testing them, Salem sticks to pretty much any of the V H S L sanctioned activities, not just sports, but forensics and, you know, academic team and all that stuff. Yeah, quiz bowl, anything not like required for graduation. So Salem tests two times during the fall and winter and three times in the spring. Bodatot says their plan is to test the minimum of two times in the fall, winter and spring. And the reason they do that in the spring in Salem is because Salem's a little different, I'll get to this in a second, but Salem tests twenty percent of each activity. So where Bodatot's dumping them all into one pool and pulling out twenty percent. And the reason for that is you can't say, well, we don't test football players, because, yeah, you do, you test twenty percent of the football players, twenty percent of the, all the fall sports and all the fall activities at the same time. Where Bodatot's putting them all in one big pot and saying, all right, we're gonna do ten percent the first test and ten percent the second test. So it will be possible that they could test all athletes, or they could test all drivers, because it's completely randomized.
So they test one particular bucket at a time, ten percent?
Salem tests every individual thing at twenty percent.
Hundred percent of that team.
Right, of that team, of every team. Bodatot is putting them all into one big pot and testing ten percent the first test in the fall, ten percent the second test.
I guess you could consider it's random on either side.
It is, but, but random on other side, you're guaranteeing somebody from each representative activity in Salem is tested. And where in Bodatot, it, it may or may not end up that way, but yes, they're both randomized.
So under that scenario, you're saying like Bodatot, you could get ten baseball and no tennis or no, okay.
Which is why Salem went to the other way.
Oh, excellent.
Way better. Yeah. Interesting.
So, and that's where I already talked about it, Salem does twenty percent of each of the activities, Bodatot does ten percent of the total, but, but it adds up to twenty, because they'll do ten percent on the first test, ten percent on the second test. Salem might do ten percent of all the athletes, you know, or the extracurriculars, the first test and ten percent the second test, to where it equates to twenty percent of the total. They're all, both divisions use a random selection process through the computer that's managed by a third-party company. What they test for, Bodatot basically said they're testing for alcohol, tobacco, nicotine, any controlled substance, and their plan is to do performance enhancing substances. Salem basically says we may include and gives a list, but are not limited to, but they're pretty much both testing for the, the common drugs. One of the big things to make this successful is you have to really communicate it and then have time to communicate it to the, to the constituents. So they have orientation meetings before every sport season or every activity season and basically say, just a reminder, we have this random drug testing policy, yada, yada, yada. Every kid has to sign an annual consent form, uh, before they're allowed to even practice on both sides. If the kid's eighteen, he can sign himself. And I'm saying practice, but it could be practicing for Skills USA or debate or whatever. The testing protocol and confidentiality, so I just brainstormed, like, we, you'd need a central office person to oversee it, so I volunteered Tammy, or Ms. Newcomb, I'm sorry, to be the program coordinator. Wow, she said, congratulations. But then the, the actual athletic director at each school has to navigate the logistics of the testing. So for example, I would send the labels and, and who was gonna be tested like the day before. So the school then printed off the labels and had them ready for the drug testing company that comes in and does the drug test. The athletic director, or whoever we would deem to do it, would then go get the kid out of class, bring him to the secure testing site, private, have him, you know, you, they did a urine sample. And then they would go back to class. So that, it does eat up time in, in the A D or whatever staff members, um, world. Which, when they did it at Andrew Lewis, that also included the, the middle school A D, which is an assistant principal, so, which would be the same for us.
Do you have an idea of how much time that might, I mean, it really.
Yeah, that's why we did three ti, that's why we did three during the spring, is because it, it'll eat up half your day.
Okay.
If you're trying to get to twenty percent. Now, obviously, if you, you don't have to do twenty percent, you can do ten percent.
But if you add up all the minutes in a school year, that's really a small fraction of your school year, right?
Yeah, and, and it's not the whole kids there the whole time, it's the A D or whoever's monitoring the site that has to be there.
I just want to ask you, Jamie, did they prioritize pulling the child out, or the student out, rather, during lunch or first block or?
To be honest with you, we started testing as early as we could in the morning, and we just grabbed kids as we could. Because you're working with a third-party company that's actually doing it, the school staff never touched anything, they just transport the kid.
Ideally, you would, but you run a practical.
Yeah, I just was wondering how that would seem like you're chasing chickens, are we?
Exactly, so confidentiality, uh, the drug testing results are confidential, only disclosed to the parent, the student and school staff that need to know about it. Uh, all names and personally identifiable information remain confidential, and they're not stored in their academic record. So basically, when the kid graduates, as, as allowed by law, you shred those, that information. Because the whole purpose here is prevention and support. So basically, in summary, random selection, student invocation, sample collection is done by the, in Salem, it was done at the school in a secure, private location by the approved agency. So what would count as a, a confirmed consequence, like, why should you get a consequence? Obviously, if you get a confirmed positive test, if you refuse to participate, uh, if you leave school without proper documentation, and this was learned, because the word spreads real fast that the testing people are here and, you know, kids will try to check out. If they have a pre, you know, a note to check out for a doctor's appointment or all that, that's an excuse, but if they're, and I'll be honest with you, there were lots of times we pulled a kid's name that was at Gov. School. Well, that kid was at Gov. School when the testing was going on, so that happens. And then tampering with a specimen. First offense for both of them are gonna be fourteen-day suspensions from the activity. Uh, they are allowed to go and watch, but they can't participate. In Salem, you automatically go through, they partner with Intercept, and you go through three sessions where they do a drug substance abuse assessment, and then the, they determine whatever the plan is for the kid, and that's at the parent expense. Bodatait was still working on what they were gonna do as far as their therapeutic, but they thought for fourteen, they would just basically, you lose your parking pass for fourteen days, and then you have to participate in their own student assistance program. Second offense for Salem is basically an eighty-four-day suspension. And they also have to go back and get another substance abuse assessment, in that their program is designed by that third-party company to figure out what they're gonna do to try to con, continue to support the kid.
Would the second offense only be if you randomly picked them again? Or are you, are you automatically doing it?
If you get caught the first time, and it's not nicotine in Salem, like, let's say I got caught for marijuana vape pen, but I'm tested, anytime I'm, as long as I'm participating in an activity when the test is going on. Like, if I say play football, but I don't play a winter sport, you don't test the kid in the winter if he's not, not, um, in a fall sport, does that make sense?
You don't randomly, but you, he's still in the program, right?
Still in the program, yes, sir. And then, yes, if, if you get caught, you're automatically flagged for a calendar year to be retested as long as you're participating, yes.
And, and is that the second suspension in the same year, could it be like the second year?
Well, so I'm gonna get to that, it's different, so Bodatait is basically a three hundred and sixty-five day calendar, Salem's is cumulative. So if I get caught in the seventh grade with marijuana, and I get caught in the tenth grade with marijuana, and you're gonna see, the third offense for Salem is a lifetime ban. I never had a third offense, I'm just being honest, never.
When did they implement?
This was implemented in like two thousand eight or something, if I'm, two thousand twelve, something like that, it's been a while, yeah. And I remember when they did it, I remember it was on the news, and I actually still remember the kid's name, who was a wrestler, who was like, I like it because I can tell my friends I can't participate because I'm in season, so.
Got a clarifying question real quick.
Yes, sir.
For my, so if a student is in a fall sport, obviously, they're in the random pool, they get pulled, they test positive. The next time you do it, like during winter sports, that kid, if they're in a winter sport, they're automatically tested again. But what if they're, what if they tested positive in the fall, because they're a fall sport, but they're not in a winter sport? I think you already said that, we can say it again?
Yeah, so they're still subject to non-random tests for three hundred and sixty-five days.
Okay, regardless of whether or not they're in a winter sport or spring sport.
So once you get caught once, you're in the pool for?
Yes.
For the three sixty-five, okay.
Um, so now the big thing is, and this is what we need to plan for if we decide that we wanna do something like this, is the cost estimate. So I called a company, a local company that one of the divisions is using to do it, and basically, it's ninety-five dollars a test if you're not testing for performance enhancing drugs or steroids. And it's two hundred and one dollars a test if you are. So testing for steroids makes it, it's just more expensive. And basically, the, the cost changes based on what you decide you're gonna test for, right? And also what percentage of people you're gonna test. So I based it off, if it's ten percent and we are testing for steroids, uh, and there's no parking pass included. Because I will be honest with you, I, I think it would be logistically a nightmare, because it was a half a day when we were just doing the athletes and the, the forensics and things like that. You throw in all the parking pass kids too, and you, it depends, if you wanna throw them all in one bucket, there's a lot of variables here. Uh, but the way I marked it out is if I was just doing the extracurricular activities, not including the parking pass, not including the CTSOs, I got the numbers from our high schools on what were the numbers of participation, and it comes out to about a hundred and three thousand dollars. Um, if we include the kids that parked, I keep hitting this button, I'm sorry, if I include the kids to park at ten percent, it goes to a hundred and twenty-six thousand. But if I don't include steroids, you can see the price difference, it's basically half.
Can you speak to that? What's on the steroid, I mean, I'm sure it's still a issue, but I wonder if it's a bigger issue than it used to be.
I don't, I don't know that it is as big an issue as it used to be, to be honest with you.
Does Salem do steroids?
So you can randomly do it too, like, so you can say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do fi, I want five of these random tests to include testing for steroids. Does that make sense? And that's why Salem puts in the wording May. Well, Bodatait is trying to, but then Bodatait, I've also found out that there's gonna be two hundred and one dollars a test, and they only put sixty grand to the side, so now they're thinking they're making it for the random. Well, in my conversation.
But like most drugs, right, I mean, we're gonna randomly pick somebody, but you're not gonna randomly pick the guy that's on the debate team that weighs a hundred and twenty-five pounds and say, hey, we're gonna test you for steroids, right? So like, I'm, I'm wondering in my mind what sense this makes.
Right.
You know, if we're randomly doing that, and we're also randomly doing the steroid piece.
Right.
And it always picks somebody that's not, hey, that guy's huge, you might be on steroids kind of thing, right?
Right.
So to me, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
And the key is to keep it on all random.
I think you keep it random, and you save yourself a buck or two.
Because you can't say, well, Brent Hudson, you, you looking pretty good lately, I think you might be on the sauce, so I'm gonna.
Right.
Test you for steroids.
So some of these.
Above us three hundred pounds on the debate.
Yeah, I tried, I tried to.
Some of these, um, enhancers, I'll use that word, that these kids are taking, that they get at GNC, shouldn't say that, but a health food store, a health food store. And, uh, they've got, you know, it comes in a jar and you scoop it out, and then they put creatine and all that stuff. So sometimes, if you're beefed up on creatine.
Hey, don't be testing me for that.
You might, no, you're, I, no, I'm kidding, but my boy hasn't taken that stuff. So I, I'm just wondering if we could ask those companies, does that fall into that in a book? Because there are kids who take that, I don't, I just don't know.
So creatine is not an illegal drug.
Okay.
So where antibiotic steroids are, so they probably wouldn't test.
Is it don't cross over at all?
But if I took creatine, and it wa, it did have like contaminated banned substance, it's sentenced for Olympic athletes all the time, then they get caught, and it's their responsibility for whatever they're putting in their body. So, and then, if, at the twenty percent mark, you can say it roughly doubles, but it doesn't quite double, because there's a two thousand dollar setup fee. And then there's a thousand dollars every time they come out to do a test at each school, so that's why it's not quite doubled. And then the board would need to determine, well, if we decide we wanna go this route in the future, do we also wanna eat the therapeutic costs? Or do we wanna put that back on the parent? That's just things to consider. So if you were interested in, in the future, the steps, in my opinion, would be looking at an RFP to figure out what it would be, the actual costs. Developing a committee of stakeholders, because you don't wanna do this from both, calling to both divisions, you wanna make sure you got some buy-in before you do it. Uh, and honestly, the reason Salem started is that, because it kept popping up on a survey all the time, because everybody was saying they had a drug problem, and it was like, well, what are some possible solutions? And drug testing kept coming up.
It's a known deterrent.
Yes, and then bringing the committee recommendation to the future work session if you wanted to do that, and we could get all this done if the board wanted to budget for it. For the next school year, we would have time to actually do something, but I don't recommend doing anything right now.
For this year.
Yes, sir.
But it would be a nice lead-in, to give a year of warning, here it comes.
Yes, sir.
One, one question I wanna have answered, and just to throw this out there, just that, and you already know this, but, uh, this whole notion of, um, like, if we wanted to go beyond athletics and look at some of those clubs and so forth, I have a real question about whether or not some of those things are what I would call co-curricular, not extracurricular. And does that get us kind of legal issue? Like your, you know, your CTE-related organizations, I'm not so sure that counts as extracurricular.
Yeah, and I, and I don't wanna judge another division, but I have asked that question, and I have the same concerns you do. I would not make the recommendation to be testing co-curricular activities like the Skills USA kids, because we are required to offer CTSOs as part of the curriculum.
Right.
Every school has to, now, the kid doesn't have to participate in it, but you have to offer it if you have a CTE program. And I just think you're really graying the li, the lines there, and they're, I have not seen anything in Supreme Court rulings about that. You know, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, with, with the numbers you're looking at testing, even the parking passes is overwhelming.
Got a few questions, the accuracy of the testing, um.
Super accurate, um, we, in Salem, we use the same company that the S E C uses to test their athletes.
And are the samples kept for a retest? I mean, I, I can very much see parents appealing this, I know my.
Yeah, but they have to pay for, well, in my previous division, they had to pay for the appeal, I had that happen once, and it came back positive as well. Yes, they keep a sample for appeals. And it, the other thing that does happen, and I skipped over this, is kids get, test positive for over-the-counter medication or prescription medication. So you have to deal with that, right? Like, Dr. Ackerman would call me and say, hey, can you call the family and ask what they had for breakfast? Because if you eat an everything bagel, you're gonna test positive. And if you are on ADHD medicine, a lot of times, so I would call and say, hey, can you verify if your kid's on any medication? I never had an argument with a parent, they were always great, uh, about doing it. And, and based on the levels that those things come back to, the doctor who's running the test can actually tell you, I don't really think this is, but just check. Like, they can tell based on the levels that are in your body.
And you mentioned not including driving, I mean, we, we, the last thing we want are students under the influence out driving, so I think it's important that we consider including that, and you wanna talk about a deterrent. Tell a senior he's gotta ride the school bus.
Yeah. Well, I, I don't disagree with you, I'm just talking about the logistics of actually.
The number.
The number of kids you test in a day. So I saw it in real time, where it takes basically at least half the day just to test the athletes. But you could do it different, you, you could do, we're just gonna test twenty percent randomly.
Or you could do five percent.
And I'm assuming that's probably why they did that.
Right.
Or you, yeah.
Does that make sense, versus twenty percent for each thing? Let's be real, Salem tested, made sure they tested football too, because everybody in the world's gonna say, well, they don't test their football player.
But you could also test a certain, different percentage for parking passes as well.
You could.
And not that many, I mean, I don't know, per school, how many parking passes do you have? A hundred, a hundred and fifty?
And I'm gonna be honest with you.
So five percent of that is not a huge number, but it's a big deterrent.
Yes, and then we have to make sure that we're enforcing, like we used to back in the day, that you have to have a parking pass. When we put the ugly sticker on your window if you were parking and you weren't.
We, we do it in value.
So I would just tell you that, that several principals told me that they thought that the, the number that bought the parking pass wasn't exactly the number that it is.
So, yeah. So that's extra revenue we're missing out on, Jamie.
I know. I won't, I won't sell them out on Google. But you make good points, I mean, I agree with you, I think if we can feat, if we can logistically do it, that is a good group to target.
Oh, yeah. That's a huge rate of privilege.
And let's just say the bottom line is, with today's world and what substances we've been fighting, these vapes, and we don't know what's in this stuff, that, you know, the last thing I wanna do is be invasive in somebody's personal, private lives, but for our kids, if we take, if we have this opportunity, they may not get this opportunity if they get out of high school and something goes wrong. So for me, as much as I hate to do it, I, I, that's why I ask you if we could have this conversation, is because for me, I think we, we need to start it as quickly as we can. And I get that we need to give us a little bit of time to ramp up to it, but, um, it, it needs to happen.
Well, if, if the board recommends that I move forward, I can start moving forward with the RFPs and the committees and all that stuff in preparation for next year.
We couldn't, we couldn't start at January one, could we? I mean, is that a bad idea?
One question.
Budget was.
We don't have a budget for it.
Yeah, we'd have to find the money.
That's the problem.
Well, I think it's always good to start at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, I do too. I think it's an excellent program, I think I was, I don't know what event I was at with you, Dr. Saltis, and you had told me that Salem was doing that, and I thought, oh my gosh, we have got to do that. So the fact that a year later, we're here, I am tickled.
My, my son actually got tested this year.
Okay.
And I asked him, or, he goes, Dad, I got tested today, I said, well, did you pass? He goes, I don't know, have you heard?
Wait a second.
He said he ate a lot of bagels. Yeah, okay.
Well, there's also, uh, my daughter has been asked if we're starting it, are we doing what LB's doing? So the, the kids are already starting to talk.
Yeah.
Which is not a bad thing.
But there, there are two sides of the faction, so you would definitely wanna make sure you had.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, like, what would that look like in terms of?
From the community would be my recommendation.
And what would that look like?
At least majority support.
I, I can't imagine any parent would think otherwise.
I mean, a survey, but you're only gonna get.
No, surveys are not, I'm not interested. I'm interested in doing what's right, and I think this is what's right for our students, not only in terms of prevention, but in terms of giving them the wraparound services that they need to get them through a high school education. And, and right now, we have a lot of kids, and we see it when we go behind those walls of disciplinary hearings who are struggling. And they're struggling, and we need to help them, and this is one way to help them.
And we would need a committee basically to come up with what are the recommendations to the board for the consequences. These are just two examples, we can make it whatever we want.
And I think that's what you were getting to, is how would that look, I think that would look us forming a committee of stakeholders in the community. And we've talked about this in the past with each one of us picking someone in the community to.
Like Bodatait had a judge on there, they had police officers on there, they had some parents on there, they had athletes on there. So they, they had a pretty big committee to make it happen.
And I just think community buy-in's gonna be huge, so I just, we have to think through like what that looks like in terms of getting this information out.
Well.
And what that looks like.
And to your point, e- even if it's the right thing, we still wanna make sure we've done everything we can to communicate it, communicate it, communicate it, communicate it.
Brent, I agree with you as well, we need to have us a parent advocate set up.
That you feel is like, you know, a reasonable, rational, accurate representation of your district.
And that, you know, we've got the, the student committee, we've got the, you know, the staff, you know, the committees, and, and we've got the parents, but I think, I don't know if we're getting engaged enough with them. And that's kind of our liaison, I think that would be, I agree with you.
That's something we can work together.
What would it look like to put a committee together? Well, it depends on what you guys wanna do, I could get a representative from each of your districts that you guys pick, and then I could also work with the principals to pull a couple others in. I mean, you wanna include coaches, I'm assuming, and, and other act. I mean, you want to include coaches, I'm assuming, and, and other activities to determine what actually we want to do. Like who do we want to test? How much do we want to test? And what do we want to test for? Those are big variables. Then once you get all that, what are the consequences going to be? You know what I'm saying?
Just kind of let the committee debate it all.
Do what?
Let the committee debate all of those.
And then bring a recommendation to you guys. And then you guys can say, no, actually, we think there ought to be a, it ought to be cumulative. And if you get caught your third time versus, and you might, but you might say, no, it's just for three sixty-five. You know, there's different ways of looking at it.
And it is interesting that Salem has been doing it this way for how long now? Since two thousand?
I can't remember exactly without pulling it up. I think it was twelve or, it's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a long time. And have they revamped it and changed it and pivoted?
Well, like when, with nicotine, they always just basically, it's the first offense consequences every time. They don't accumulate, accumulate the nicotine. But if it's a marijuana or anything of that nature, then yes, it's, it's the cumulative.
Do we want to try a little on this?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. We can talk about it.
If y'all want to talk about it and then just tell me how you want me to proceed, that'd be great.
Thank you for this information. Thank you for working hard on it.
You're welcome.
Item three point zero five, Administrative Regulation seven point one three, administering medication to students, update Dr. Jamie Saltis.
Yes, ma'am. So this is, if you guys will remember, the last time we had all the policy updates, we just had the one policy with the ability to carry seizure medications that we really wanted to talk with Charlene and, and, and work through. We did. Cheryl and I both talked to Charlene. We all got together and talked and Charlene's comfortable with this. So basically, we are going to let it be that you can, with the approval of the Roanoke County Public Schools Medical Care Team. And we've defined who has to be on that team. The question was, most of the time, you don't administer the seizure medication until you're, what, three minutes into the seizure or something like that? Three to five minutes? And so the person probably couldn't self-administer, but some probably could. So as long as the prescribing physician, the student's parent or guardian, the principal, the school nurse, and Charlene, the coordinator of health services, all agree, and then the parents follow these steps by having the written documentation from the doctor, yada, yada, then we would, we would allow it if you guys are good with that. And then the other thing is we're going to update what they can carry non-prescription medications. And this was the recommendation of the, of the committee to being ibuprofen, acetaminophen, basically Advil, Tylenol, Tums, and lactaid. That takes care of it, that covers everything. So if you guys are good with this, I can move, I'd make the recommendation, we move this to consent and just put it on.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's an admin reg, so the board is actually going to approve it.
That's right, that's right. Just make you aware.
Thank you.
I apologize. I think I have more.
The policy update.
And there's more.
So are we good there on that one? Item three point zero six, policy updates, Dr. Jamie Saltis.
So as you guys know, the student conduct, well, you may not know, policy seven point one one, the student conduct code has to be reviewed annually. And there's, our policy, our conduct code houses a whole bunch of different policies that are separate from the policy manual as well. So with that being said, we're making some revisions and recommendations, like we are going to include the student use of personal mobile devices on school property or at school-sponsored activities, which you guys adopted earlier last year. That's the cell phone policy. We basically, we didn't have it in time adopted to be able to put it in the conduct code for last year. But we putting it in for this year if you guys are good at it or good with it. The next thing is the administration of non-prescription medication update that I just went over, putting it in there. And then adding the seizure rescue medication stuff in there. So none of that is any different. And then the other thing I left at your table was the student, student-created work policy. And we've always had a plagiarism policy in the student conduct code. And the student work, student-created work policy bled out of that AI work that we were doing. So it also incorporates when artificial intelligence is allowed to be used, the fact that if you use it, you have to cite it, and what the consequences will be. The consequences are basically identical to what they were for plagiarism. So the only thing that's really changing is you're incorporating AI into it. Obviously, if the teacher says, you can use AI, here's how I want you to use it, that's fine. And if she doesn't say you, you can't use it, you know, and you do use it, you cite it just like you had went to the library. So that's basically the, the change there is just updating it to include artificial intelligence. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys may have about this student-created work policy. So just like the plagiarism, we defined what is student-created work. We defined what is plagiarism. Basically, Mike and his committee got together and kind of paralleled it and then made sure that we included the AI stuff.
So that was, this is under the policy updates, that's the one, that's the only.
Yeah, because seven point one one has so many different policies in it that when I, when I updated in there and you open it up and you try to find, I'm sorry, Ms. Newcombe was about to have a heart attack trying to put the lines through the part and get the format and redo it. And if y'all don't know Ms. Newcombe, she has some challenges with her computer. She walks up to it and today the font just changed out of nowhere. She didn't touch anything. I saw it, I witnessed it myself.
So regarding the AI, did the VDOE come out with any model?
So the VDOE has not released.
Okay, we haven't gotten it.
Anything to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge.
Or is it coming? Because I've heard it was coming.
And if it does, we'll have to come back and revisit it.
Okay, okay.
Unrelated to that policy.
Yeah.
Go to one more policy that's not, it's certainly going to create some heartburn. But are we adopting Yonkins bell-to-bell? I, I'm still unclear on that.
So.
And, and the reason I ask that is I've had interactions with some of our teachers now that honestly say it's a joke, that they're still, they're still, and again, I know what we say. But if you got half of them enforcing it and half of them not enforcing it, it's, it's just a problem.
So we didn't make any changes to what we had originally adopted last year?
Well, we did make one change.
Uh, one change, I'm sorry, you're right. Basically, elementary school kids are not allowed to have it even on the bus. It has to be off and out of sight.
So elementary's bell-to-bell or?
Elementary's.
Bus-to-bus.
Bus-to-bus.
Okay.
Middle school is bell-to-bell. High school is not their instruction at all, but they could still have it in the hallways and in the, in the cafeteria. We tried to eliminate that teacher enforcement, that teacher not enforcement by removing it from the classroom. And I'll be honest with you, there are other divisions around us that I know that I'm, somebody I'm a really good friend with, who are buying the lockers and stuff. And I'll be honest with you, I'll be surprised if the kids put it in the locker. You know what I mean? There's, the, the bottom line is, there are some people who are going to try to bend and break the rules.
That's right. You either enforce it.
We have to make staff consistently enforce it. And I've heard Dr. Nicely tell the principals, this is a non-negotiable.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, is it perfect? No. Is there inconsistency? Yes. I don't think it's a joke. You know, I think people are making the effort, it's just not as consistent.
I can tell you, I spoke to multiple and, and it's not just, it's not just one. But, you know, it is what it is. And so when did you tell them it's non-negotiable? Was that coming up for this year or?
Well, you had.
I've, I've said it, you know, multiple times, but the, the, the key is like any other rule, it's got to be enforced, right? And a lot of rules, like any other rule, has to happen at the classroom level. Those are getting around that.
Yep.
That's right. So, so, so it's still, and that's what they say, is they still have to enforce.
That's right.
Well, and the bottom line is they do.
And some do and some don't.
Right, right, right.
Right, which is not acceptable.
I know, I agree with that. And honestly, the principals ought to be dealing with teachers who are not enforcing the classroom policy.
Yep.
Do we have any idea who in our, our neighbors did officially adopt it bell-to-bell?
Salem did.
Salem did?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Did they buy the lock, they, or they bought the lockers?
They bought these lockers off of Amazon that I think, from what I've been told.
Is it like a, what, is it like a number code?
But it basically is about the size of a, of a postal box. Like if you had a postal box at the post office, it's got enough room basically for your keys, your wallet, your cell phone.
Oh, okay. And is it in each classroom or is it in the hallway?
They're dispersed in the hallway.
Okay. So you just have to, oh, you could pick any one and like decode it?
They assign it to you.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's like basically having a locker.
Okay, I wonder how much that costs?
I may have to find out. Anyway, so are you guys good with moving this policy to consent, seven point one one? That would be my recommendation.
Yes, sir.
It's that one and the original, the student-created work policy?
All that is, there was no separate plagiarism policy. It's incorporated in.
Oh, it's in the creative conduct code?
Right. And that's what I'm saying, like lots of divisions have each of those policies broken out and then compile them into their conduct code. Our conduct code contains some policies that are not in our policy manual, except for in that policy. Does that make sense?
It's not a standalone policy.
It's not a standalone policy, it's part of seven point one one.
Gotcha.
I'm fine with it on consent.
And then the, is it still me?
All right, so item three point zero seven, are you ready to move to that?
I got one more.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I thought you were done.
I'm sorry. So basically, the Virginia High School, this is an admin reg, so this is more in, information. The Virginia High School League has changed their eligibility rules, starting in twenty-six, twenty-seven, if I believe them. That's the correct year, Ms. Newcombe. So in twenty-six, twenty-seven, unless you have a bona fide move, you will have to live in the middle school. Your eighth grade year, you'll have to go to the middle school of whatever high school you're going to be participating for. So for example, as an eighth grader, if I wanted to go wrestle for Byrd, I'd need to go to Byrd Middle for eighth grade in order to be eligible, unless my parents move. And it's a bona fide move. So the other change in that is the rule used to say, a few members of your family or your whatever must vacate the property for a bona fide move. Now it says all family members must vacate the property.
Well, we obviously had some issues. Just a few.
I mean, there was a school in Northern Virginia where the whole football team moved with the coach.
Yeah.
And they had won all the six A titles in a row and then.
What?
They were undefeated and then that, basically that school division shut their season down.
So does that mean LCA, those kids have to come to middle school?
In eighth grade?
Yeah.
That's a good question, Ms. Newcombe. Do you know the answer to that?
If, if the HSL had something, maybe they would.
There is a new president, so now you might be able to get a meeting with him.
If you take kids from other states, it sounds like.
And then, then the other thing we clarified, just for clarification purposes, is Roanoke County's kind of unique in that we're an AV bell schedule for our in-person classes, but our academies are four-by-fours, which means they're semesterized. Like if I'm taking government and I think I've signed up for five classes, but all of a sudden I got it second semester and I didn't have it first semester, so I only had four classes, I'm not eligible. So we wanted to make sure, Ms. Newcombe worked with the ADs to make sure there's a, using the VHSL credits and points. So every kid knows, you got to make sure you have these amount of classes in each semester.
Oh, that's interesting, because there are a lot of kids that do the academy classes.
I actually dealt with this when I was a kid, when I was a principal at Blumberg. I had a kid who was like a straight A student.
Yeah.
Tennis player, actually, who signed up thinking he was going to have.
Right.
Five in the first semester. Well, he didn't, didn't think about it because it was AP government online and he was ineligible, but.
Was he able to add a class?
Well, what he was able to do is I called the VHSL and explained to them what our situation was. And he said, well, I'll go ahead and do it this time, but.
Okay.
You're going to have to fix this.
Yeah, interesting. It's.
They might manage that, but they can't, they can't deal with.
Boys and girls sports.
Can't figure it out.
They got, they, Yonkis figured that out though. But I will say, it, another way to do it is just add it from school year to, start of the school year to the end of the school year. I don't know why they just don't.
Changing the academy to a whole year course?
No, 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 I like it how it is, because we have kids that move in and out of the.
Right.
Military or whatever.
It helps us a lot when kids come from four-by-four blocks.
Without a doubt. But, um, that the VHSL doesn't just count them all up and say it has to be X. Because one spring semester, some kid could have seven classes.
I agree.
And the other one, they want to light a lighter load and have three, right? Because of their.
Well, on the bottom line is, and this is going to be a personal pedestal, but as a wrestling coach and the winner, I would lose kids. Luckily, I never did, but I could lose kids because they weren't eligible, because they failed a fall sport. I mean, they failed a class in the fall.
Oh.
And then they're ineligible for the, for the winter halfway through my season. Then in the spring, they're ineligible, but then they take the credit recoveries or whatever in the summer and they're back eligible again for football.
Yeah.
And then I'm back in that same cycle.
So somebody should bring that. Somebody should bring that to VHSL, whoever's got a connection over there and say, what about a cumulative point system?
Yeah.
How, how about a kid that moves from sophomore season to junior season? There's, there's no requirement for that.
Uh, Ms. Newcombe, I believe.
They have to pass the five requires, I mean.
But there's no set out or anything like that?
If they do a bona fide move, if they, they have the academic eligible.
But how about these private, how about these private schools that kids?
They still have to have the credit.
They have to move into that, that division area.
And the, and the change in, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, do they like LCA?
Well, no, we'd never call out anybody, but, but the fact that they may be getting a quarterback or two.
So at the end of the day, the, the change for that is all family members must vacate the existing where they're staying in order for it to be a bona fide move. Because you, you know, have grandma staying there with the kid.
The whole family has to move to Lynchburg. Okay, I'm just trying to.
Show away the example.
Yeah, that, under, under your example.
Yes, sir. So anyway, that was for information and that's all I have, Ms. Clemens, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, item three point zero seven, paraprofessional assessment for Title I schools, Dr. Jamie Saltis.
Yeah, so I'm actually doing this one for Ms. Bradshaw. So Title I requires that you have highly qualified instructional assistants. And, and typically the test that has been done is the parapro, which costs about a hundred dollars a test. The, the state does allow you to develop a local assessment that covers the topics that are required. And we have checked, we, we put a committee together, we actually designed it, fifty-question assessment. It's been approved by the Title I group at the state for us to use our local assessment, but it has to be blessed by the board that we're okay to use that in lieu of the parapro assessment. So Ms. Bradshaw asked that I present that to you guys and see if y'all were good with that and if so.
It meets the need, but saves us money.
Yes, yes. That's, yeah.
Does that go on consent?
If you're okay with that.
If everybody's good with it. Thank you very much. I think I'm done.
Okay.
Your time's up.
Item three point zero eight, request to approve the memorandum of understanding between Roanoke County School Board and Cave Spring Baptist Church, Ms. Susan Peterson.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you should have the board agenda and the MOU at your places. So as you're aware, when we have events over at Cave Spring Middle School or at Vogel, there is not a ton of parking. So as you're aware, uh, when we have events over at Cave Spring Middle School or at Vogel, uh, there is not a ton of parking. Um, and oftentimes, our parents and visitors will, uh, park at Cave Spring Baptist Church and walk across the street. Um, last year, the pastor administration reached out to us with concerns of the additional risk that this places on, uh, the church. Uh, they don't typically open up their parking lot for general public purposes, uh, but they do want to support the school division. And so we worked through this memorandum of understanding with the lawyers and the insurance company last year. Um, and it was adopted last year. Uh, this is an annual agreement that we would go through, and this would just lay their concerns. Uh, once this is adopted, we would also add them as an additional insured on our insurance policy. Um, and then we would be good to go for the year. And so this is just, uh, standard procedure procedure that we'll do each year. And so I would like to, um, not get choked up, sorry, I would like to, uh, add this to one over there, um, the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Has our legal counsel reviewed this?
Um, last year, they did. I didn't put it back through them because the only thing I changed was the date.
I'm with me.
Yep.
That's good. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three point zero nine, Long-Term Facilities Usage Contracts, Ms. Tammy Newcombe.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, in accordance with the school board policy eight point oh one, all long-term rental agreements must be approved by the board. We have received requests from Elevation Church and Journey Church to continue utilizing school facilities under long-term rental agreements. These arrangements have been vetted for compliance with facility use guidelines and do not interfere with school operations. We respectfully request the school board's approval of these long-term rental agreements as required by policy.
Just one question, if I may. I noticed that, uh, at Northside, we rent the auditorium for three hundred and thirty-four dollars, and over at Hidden Valley, it's six hundred and fourteen dollars. Is the reason for the the difference in?
I think it might be capacity, my understanding.
It's in policy what the charges are, when I look South County.
Oh, my gosh. Two in one day. I know. I just can't take it.
I mean, the the rates for custodians, the rates for classrooms were the same, but the rates for the auditorium were different.
What's your size for auditorium capacity?
Does that, pardon me?
What's your capacity in your auditorium?
I think the auditorium in Northside is probably bigger than the auditorium in Hidden Valley.
It is. I don't, is that in policy, the capacity or?
It has in policy, I'm trying to find it. It is in policy, the charges for different places and and certain things had higher charges. Like, if you have a turf field, you're using a turf field, that's different.
I doubt it. I doubt it because of the size of the auditorium.
I don't know why.
It might be a number of classes. It was, was it laid out like auditoriums to the clean and the classrooms?
Auditorium, three hundred and thirty-four dollars at Northside, six hundred and fourteen dollars at Hidden Valley.
And is it Journey Church that's there?
I can check. I don't, I don't know that answer. This is a reoccurring contract, so I didn't.
And and that's also something that we can look at revising.
Who's in that auditorium? Who rents that?
Pardon?
Who rents that?
Journey Church.
Oh, Journey Church? Is that, is that who?
Northside.
They've been there a long time.
A long time.
Jamie, if I remember correctly, there there's actually a calculation, utility cost included in that.
Utility beside it, mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, so that's separate.
That's separate, mm-hmm. I can certainly look into that.
Okay.
I'm not sure why.
And does that money stay with the schools? Or does it come back here to the central office?
I think percentage stays with the school percentage.
Policy as well.
Yeah, we used to, we used to spread that amongst all the districts, but.
Yeah, it's seventy-five, twenty-five, I remember.
Somewhere we.
A certain percentage stays with the school or the rest of the seminaries.
The school does do a lot of work. They have to, you know,
They do.
turn on the lights, handle complaints, I mean, contracts, I mean, there's a lot.
In case the heat doesn't come on or the.
There's a lot of issues.
I'll find the actual charge chart.
I'll check in with that. I'm I'm sure Northside will know why. I know that they talked to me, um, today that at Journey, they were, um, looking to go month to month because they had bought properties somewhere else. But they contacted us and stated no that they really weren't ready for that right now. So they they did want us to, um, make their contract through June of next year.
Another idea is maybe it's time, uh, maybe hidden, I mean, maybe at Elevation, is renting it out from seven AM until one o'clock? They have a, I mean, a broader setup? I mean, I don't know.
Smaller timeframe maybe.
Yeah, you might have a smaller timeframe over there. I don't know. Just one thought.
It's seven to twelve here, and over here, it's five AM to three PM. They're doing ten hours. At Hidden Valley, they're doing five.
Okay, that's what it is then.
You're getting a deal.
That's what it is. It's based on five hours instead of ten.
Yeah, that's because it seemed, the number seemed it was almost double, so it makes sense to me.
All right, I found it. It took me a while, but I found it. So it is interesting because under the facility type for Cave Spring High School, it is based on capacity. Cave Spring High School has a thousand six seats, so it's a five hundred and three dollar rental fee. And then that, the extra is probably electricity.
Well, this is in Cave, this is Hidden Valley.
Okay, Hidden Valley is six hundred and fourteen. And Northside is six sixty-six, but Hidden Valley's three hundred and seven dollars. And Cave Spring is, I mean, I'm sorry, um, what am I looking?
What's Northside?
I'm looking for Northside. Sorry, I can't see without my glasses. Three hundred and thirty-four dollars.
That's what it says.
Yeah. So, but there's all these other ancillary charges that can be used. Utility fees, installation, setup of IT is twenty-five dollars an hour.
Hmm.
Uh, site supervisors, twenty-one fifty-two per hour. So that's probably where all these other.
And extra time.
Additional fee guidelines. So fifty percent of the rental fees are allocated to the school, fifty percent to the school board, a hundred percent of the utility fees go to the school board. Hundred percent of the, uh, site supervisor fees will be allocated to the school board to offset the associated payroll costs. So.
I'll double check.
Yeah, we don't need to belabor this anymore, but it would be nice to know.
We'll get that clarified for for all of you guys.
Certainly will.
I'm sorry.
Are we good? Item three point one zero, Middle School Vape Detectors, Ms. Tammy Newcombe.
Okay, at the request of the school board, we have gathered cost information related to potential installation of vape detection systems in the five middle schools. This includes all necessary equipment, licensing, infrastructure to support the devices. Included in the estimate is the number of sensors for each school. Each of you have a copy of this. And it's just for information if we wanted to, um, budget for that next year.
So the way this currently works, there's an initial setup fee. Mr. Cherry, it's under his umbrella, but there's an initial setup fee. And then we lease, we do the the yearly cost on a lease basis.
That's, that's what we do for the high schools. So you'll see on that paper that, uh, the first year is more expensive because there are certain things you cannot lease, basically the cabling. You can't lease the cabling, so that's seventy-five thousand upfront. And then the equipment itself is all leasable, and that's roughly another seventy-five thousand per year.
What's the feedback from the ones we've installed in the high school?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, I think what we've heard is, uh, you know, students report that, uh, there are some who, you know, work around these things. The, but the other side of that is, it's, it seems to have made a positive difference.
That's what I've heard.
It's not foolproof, but it's a positive change.
I've heard it's agreed to. In fact, my student council, advisory council, they said we, you know, because we have kids that are in the middle school in that council, and they said, we need it in the middle school.
It's a leadership conference. I had both Hidden Valley and Cave Spring with me.
Yeah.
And that was what was brought up, was that they thought we needed them in the middle schools as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if it's, if we feel like it's working in the high schools and it's a deterrent, then I think it would make sense to do it at the middle school.
Felt like it had really knocked the numbers down. It really made a difference. It took a little bit, but once it did, it made a big difference.
I think in middle school, you're more apt to do the right thing.
Yeah.
So it's a way to stop it from progressing.
And we know that they are doing it at, right? So it'd be, right.
And we're happy with the technology we're currently using. I guess it's part of my question too. It's, we've had a year now.
We've had a year.
So we're happy with with the technology, the company, the services they provided?
Yeah, so a couple stories, uh, talked to Ms. Green from Northside. And with the technology we have, it will alert the administrators by either text or email the moment it goes off. So one of her comments, uh, that she gave me this week was, it's a game changer for me at Northside because sometimes I'm outside of the bathroom door waiting for them to come out, knowing that the sensor just went off.
Wow.
Uh, she said, I've got more, less, less students in the hallways and which keeps them in the classroom more so. She feels like it was money well spent was her exact term.
That's crazy.
And it also allows the kids who want to use the bathroom to use the bathroom, which before, kids were not, I mean, they were literally holding.
So this would be one of those items.
Uncomfortable, especially in the middle school, I feel like, because they are so worried about getting in trouble and guilty by association, so.
Yes, Mr. Green, what I was pointing, so what we would need to do, if you are in favor of moving forward with this, I think the middle school principals are also in favor. Um, you know, come budget season, we'll have to budget, uh, you know, approximately one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the first year and then about seventy-five afterwards, as long as the prices hold for any.
Right.
Any potential for grant money on those? Did we?
We can always look for grants for sure, and and we we continue to look for grants for not only that, but any of the security things, so we'll, we'll continue to look them up.
Okay. That's good. That's money well spent, as she said.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else?
I know. Anything else?
All right, meeting adjourned.